Good evening. I would like to call to order the August 24, 2010, meeting of the Milton School Committee. Please join me in saluting the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we'll just accept it as written. We have anyone here for citizen speak? Then we can move right into accepting some of our previous school committee minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May 18, 2010, school committee meeting.
Moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Yeah? Are you abstaining? Yes? Oh, she's not voting. Okay.
Is that a present?
Present. I'm voting present.
Okay. I will now entertain a motion to approve the June 8, 2010, minutes of the Milton School Committee.
Moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. And entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 22, 2010, school committee retreat.
Moved.
Any discussion? Mrs. Kelly?
On page four, second paragraph down where it says, Ms. Kelly reported that she touched base with the Board of Selectmen, was really the chairman of the Board of Selectmen?
Okay.
I don't want to give the impression that I had a meeting with the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
If in both of those references, we could refer to the chair of the Board of Selectmen as opposed to the whole board.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Any other additions or corrections? With that friendly amendment, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Now we'll move to Superintendent Goleman's report.
Thank you Chairman Sheridan. I'd like to invite up tonight, we have three of our administrators here with us tonight. They've had a busy day at strategic planning. I appreciate them. One of their first days staying from dawn to dusk in the Milton Public Schools. I'd like to invite first Andy Bowles to the table. Andy, if you can come right up to this mic. Welcome Andy.
Thank you.
Andy Bowles earned his master's degree from Bridgewater State College and his CAGS in educational leadership from Bridgewater State College, his bachelor's degree from Westfield State College. Andy has served a very successful tenure in the Dedham Middle School as an assistant principal for the last three years. And before that, excellent experience as an assistant principal in the Joseph H. Martin Middle School in Taunton.
Yes.
Andy comes to us with strong administrative experience, experience in a turnaround MCAS, AYP identified school. He understands MCAS, AYP. He understands the middle school. Andy has high expectations, works well with students, students who have already met you and have responded positively, our T-kids. The screening process, James Jett does a superior job. You've stayed with us through interviews with teachers and parents and second interviews with leadership teams and then interviewed with John Phelan and me here at Central. And I'm very, very pleased to introduce to the school committee tonight our new assistant principal at the Pierce Middle School, Andy Bowles. And on top of it, Andy was very, very passionate. He lives here in Milton.
Thank you.
And he's very excited about living and working in the community. We told him John Phelan would be the perfect example of somebody who's made it, living and working and thriving in the community. So on behalf of the Milton Public Schools, I want to welcome you. We couldn't be more pleased and present you to the Milton School Committee and the public. You might have something to say and then the school committee might have some questions for you.
I just want to thank you so much for the opportunity for working for the Milton Public Schools. It is the most wonderful opportunity that's come to me yet this far. And I really want to appreciate the opportunity that you've given me to work with James, with the Central Administration, a wonderful core of teachers and parents and students. So I do really want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Mr. Huban?
Two quick questions. From your resume, it says that you've been assistant principal in both Dedham and Taunton over the last seven years. What brought you to Milton in the same capacity? What did you see about this that piqued your interest? And if you don't mind.
The first thing that piqued my interest was the same reason that I moved to Milton. It's known as a wonderful community and a wonderful public school system. My philosophy and the thinking behind it was, my daughter is going to be a part of the Milton Public Schools and I want her to enjoy the best experience possible. And this opportunity arose and I said, you know what? I want to share that experience with her going through this. I live in the community. The community has been great to me thus far and I want to give back to the community also. So when I knew the opportunity of working with James Jett and his staff over there, which I had met in previous conferences, I said, this is the opportunity for me. So I went for it.
You answered my second question.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
If I might add, it was a very competitive field, so you're to be congratulated. And working with DESE, James Jett participated in work with all middle school principals and had met Andy before the interview and met Andy's prior principal and knew of his outstanding reputation.
Thank you.
I see that you've, oh, Mr., sorry, Mr. Cohen.
I just want the members to know that I actually know Mr. Bowles personally and professionally. Outside of teaching, he's also, to me, he epitomizes hard work. He is not only going to be the vice principal of the Pierce Middle School, but he's also a real estate agent that is working in the evenings and weekends and I've witnessed it firsthand. I think he's going to be a great role model for all our children in the Pierce Middle School and let them see what hard work can do for you. So well done. I'm delighted that you're there.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
I see that you've implemented some programs for at-risk students and special ed students. So I look forward to hearing about your exciting programs that you develop and you bring to Pierce Middle School. So welcome and thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Next, I'd like to call to the table Amy Gale. And while Amy's taking her seat, for the public, the school committee knows to remind the public that Dr. Karen Spalding and Stephanie Nephew held the halftime assistant and the curriculum positions at the Pierce School. They both sought elementary principalships. It was very competitive. And they were both appointed by large committees of parents, teachers, and administrators. And Amy Gale is taking the curriculum role. Again, we had a reorganization working with the school committee and the union. And Amy is going to be responsible for the English, math, and social studies, the curriculum coordinator at the Pierce Middle School. In my experience, working with teachers and administrators, and Ms. Kelly reacted when I said this, in a finance subcommittee, you don't meet many people who are equally talented and gifted in both math and English. Usually when you become an administrator, you go into the area of English, you go into the area of math. When John Phelan and I interviewed Amy Gale, she could have assumed the role of either. She's now responsible for the English, the math, and the social studies. And she'll be working with our next appointee, who will take over the science at the Pierce Middle School. Amy Gale comes to us with her master's from Simmons College in elementary education. And she earned her bachelor's from Drew University in Madison, New Jersey. Amy recently has been, since 2005, at the Murphy School, a K-8, in Boston. The Murphy is a very well-respected school, has turned out many administrators, it has a fine reputation. And Amy was the sixth grade advanced class teacher and a sixth grade math teacher. And Amy was known to us when we did our references and we had heard about Amy Gale in the Boston Public Schools. Amy has taken on a leadership role in the area of administration. In math instruction, as you can see by her resume, working at Simmons, working with HAVI, working on the achievement gap, Amy immediately was identified as a potential leader and administrator. And we are very, very happy that she chose to continue her career here in Milton. Again, another competitive field of administrators. And for the public, Amy, your meeting tonight, Andy Bowles and Amy Gale, who will round out with Anna McReynolds and James Jett, the new administration team at the Pierce Middle School. So on behalf of the Milton Public Schools, I want to welcome you. Both of these individuals have hit the ground running and they're there from dawn to dusk. And today, we had a strategic planning session that I'll speak to later, and they were strong contributing members and worked right into the team. So welcome, Amy.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate, as Andy said, I truly appreciate the opportunity to do this and to continue the curriculum work that I've started in Boston. I'm so impressed to see what's already in place at the Pierce Middle School and what Stephanie Nephew and Karen Spalding have left for me to continue to work on, but also in setting new goals with the staff there. And it just seems like a really motivated and enthusiastic district and staff also at Pierce. So I'm thrilled for the opportunity. Thank you.
Mr. Huban?
As I was reading through the resume this morning, I thought, wow, these are some great credentials. And we're very happy to have you here and I wish you best of luck.
Thank you.
Could you talk a little bit about the AVID English Language Arts Program?
Sure. It's interesting. You bring it up. We were just discussing that today with Mr. Jett at our strategic planning meeting. AVID is a program which stands for Advancement Via Individual Determination. And it was a program that many urban districts have adopted, but it's beginning to trickle into some suburban districts as well. And it's a methodology by which you take children who are sort of floundering somewhere in the middle and putting them in more rigorous coursework, honors and advanced work, making more students college-minded, that our job is not just to prepare kids to graduate from high school, but to prepare them for four-year colleges. And there's a great amount of training that goes into becoming an AVID supervising teacher, coordinator. But really and truly, the work that the children end up doing speaks for itself because many of the children that we had really rose to the occasion being put into a more rigorous curriculum. And kids who were getting Cs and Ds the prior year, all of a sudden are getting As and Bs and began to think about moving on to AP courses in high school and four-year college after that. It's a really incredible program.
It is. And I think it's just a perfect way of formalizing raising the bar for kids today in education.
Definitely.
And I'm really excited about you bringing that possibility to Milton. So thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Kelly?
Welcome. And just to follow up on that, so is this an off-the-shelf program or this is just a methodology? Can you just get into a little bit more?
It's a program that the city of Boston and other districts have adopted whereby they come in with their methodology and the teachers are trained to utilize it. They're in charge of sort of the report cards, so all of the administration of the program there is pretty strict. And then you sort of supply them with the data from your program and you sort of rise through the ranks and eventually become sort of a model school. So it's certainly, there are strategies that good teaching can use that AVID publishes, but the program itself is a program that a system would buy into and commit to having the teachers trained and having a site coordinator and...
And so would it look at our curriculum and say perhaps in some areas, the bar needs to be raised? Or is it a methodology to get all students getting?
Typically, there's an AVID strand in a school, so a group of students would be identified as AVID students. Those students would be placed in, for example, in honors English class as opposed to the regular ed English class. But they wouldn't just be sort of sent out there to do it on their own. They'd then go to an AVID elective course, which the elective course is sort of study skills. And it really gives the students the support that they need to succeed in those classes and to build community within the strand. And it's not, it follows them all the way through. So it's not just sort of, we're going to put you in honors English and see how you do. We're going to follow you all the way through until you get yourself into that four-year college. And even after, a lot of the data that AVID is pulling is from kids once they've been in four-year colleges.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. We're so glad you're with us, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Next, I'd like to invite Marilyn Decker to join us at the table. Welcome Marilyn. Marilyn Decker, we, this opening came about in science. Barbara Polansky, our science coordinator, has moved to work with Mass Insight. And so we've worked with the school committee and the public in different K-12 high school positions and K-8 positions. And we posted and we had interviews. And we have a resident in Milton, Dr. Bob Chen. His children are in Milton Public Schools. His wife works with us. And Bob Chen is really internationally known in the area of science education. He's a professor at UMass. And again, he's well-published, well-read, well-known. And so when we were searching for a pool, I called Dr. Chen. And he gave me some names and told me he'd make some contacts. He said, there's one very unusual person in the state and I don't know if you'll ever be so fortunate as to be able to get her, but let me make the contact with you. He said, she has gone into working with Teachers 21, but she wants to go back and work with children and teachers. So I made everybody at Central hold their breath. And while Bob Chen made the contact, and again, we had a talented pool, but we are very, very pleased to present Marilyn Decker to the school committee and the public, assuming the position of K through 12, science director, coordinator in the Milton Public Schools. Recently, as I said, Marilyn has been with Teachers 21, one of the most respected professional development providers in the state. Before that, Marilyn was the Director of Analytical and Applied Sciences in the Jefferson County Public Schools in Louisville, Kentucky. Before that, Marilyn had an outstanding tenure that was really, you earned your reputation nationally with your grant-writing expertise. And your references tell that Marilyn will make opportunities come alive for Milton Public School children and teachers, opportunities that they could have never dreamed of. Marilyn worked in the Boston Public Schools as the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction. You were a senior program director in the Boston Public Schools, an instructional team leader in Thailand. You worked at Northeastern University. You worked at K-12 Science Director in the Keene Public Schools. You were a physics teacher in your beginning school career. And then before that, you were a natural scientist and you worked in the field. And so we are very, very pleased to introduce you to the school committee and to the public. And we're very excited about rounding out these three appointments. We don't think we could have found three more talented individuals. And I'm very excited for Milton Public School children, students, teachers, administrators, and our whole team with these three appointments. Marilyn, welcome to the Milton Public Schools.
Thank you.
I want to present you to the school committee and the public and turn it over to you.
Mary mentioned that I wanted to get back and work with kids and teachers because my passion is getting kids excited about the way of knowing the world through science. I think kids need to know music, art, theater, drama, science, mathematics. And it's, science is one of the areas a lot of kids just don't get a chance to experience. So I'm very excited about being here in Milton. I've done a little work with Milton when I was in Boston, so I know the community a little bit. And I'm all moved in already.
You're welcome. Mr. Huban?
Well, welcome. Anyone from my alma mater, Northeastern, is a great addition. A question about, you spent six months as assistant superintendent in Boston Public Schools. What did you find as the most challenging issue that you had to deal with at that particular
Probably, in science, I was able to more or less direct where I wanted to go with things. I had a lot of money and I could say, okay, let's go this way. When you have all the curriculum areas and competing interests and diminishing funds, I think that's really challenging. And, you know, it, the achievement gap issues that plague all school districts are huge in Boston. And trying to do that in all the disciplines across the board, really, it's huge. There's no other way to describe it but to say it's a huge, huge challenge.
Well, hopefully, what you've learned in Boston, you can apply here because we have a few challenges of our own.
Oh, yeah.
But best of luck.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kelly?
Barbara Polansky, who held somewhat of the position before you left, was someone who, as she walked through the halls of every school, you could feel science coming alive. And I must tell you that from my perspective, science being one of my passions, those are big shoes to fill. I'm sure that you will fill them well. But when you talked about Boston and the challenges of Boston, just in terms of the hugeness of it, unfortunately, one of the challenges that we have in Milton is our finances. We do not have a wealth of resources to put towards science. And one of the things that I think that Barbara, and I'm sure that you will as well, utilized was the grant writing and the connections. And I'm sure you bring with you many of those connections. So I hope that that continues so that we're able to provide, you know, the great science program and expand it even beyond where it is right now.
Thank you.
And to that, may I?
Yes, Mrs. Kelly.
To that point, I'm going to speak to our strategic planning today, but we shared our science MCAS scores and Marilyn shot her hand in the air and replied.
It's the first time science has been mentioned in a district meeting. I was like, yay!
And so we have an advocate for science. And Marilyn had an interesting reaction after she was appointed. She said, now, Mary, I've gone on the website and you have parents who are friends of art and you have parents who are friends of music and you have parents who are friends of athletics. I'll shortly have friends of science, a parent group. And so again, to all three candidates, the local papers will put their resumes on the web. I couldn't have given them justice, their years of experience. And your resumes and your experience and your words tonight speak for yourselves.
Mrs. Kelly?
Just if I might add, I think having a friends of science is a fabulous idea. I think, really, I think it can really do amazing things. And my hope is, is that that gets going as quickly as possible.
That's exciting.
Because I think, and also with regard to not only resources but time, one of the things that I find, or at least it seems comes through, is that somehow science, especially at the elementary level, somehow doesn't get the time that perhaps it deserves to be able to engage kids like you spoke of.
I mean, one of the things I think I learned in Boston was to focus on the things I could change, focus on the resources that I did have. You have people. You develop the interests and develop those people to your maximum. That's something that doesn't take a lot of money. It takes enthusiasm and, you know, working with people. And, you know, I would say to my colleagues, let's not waste time trying to fix stuff that we can't control, that we can't, let's work on all the things here that we can make a difference.
Great. Ma'am, I think you're going to be a wonderful addition to the Milton Public Schools. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to all three of you and welcome. You can come home to your families.
Thank you. It's been a long day already, right? Thank you.
Finishing up my report, I'd like to recognize tonight the custodians and here with us tonight, Jason Sherer, who didn't know I would be recognizing the custodians, the head custodian here at Milton High, and the maintenance workers in the Milton Public Schools. To a person, everyone who has walked through the schools, comments on the work that has been done this summer by our custodial and maintenance staff. John Phelan, I told Mrs. Kelly and Ms. Sheridan, Matt Gillis, Bill Ritchie and I, walked every classroom in the school district. We met the principal and the head custodian. And from the lights to the underneath of every desk, I can testify to you, every chair, the floors, the hallways, every auxiliary space in every one of the schools has been cleaned. And on behalf of Milton Public Schools, the students and teachers, I want to publicly thank them. And I think when the parents get back in these buildings and the teachers, they will appreciate their effort. I want to also report out that at our next meeting, we'll be giving you biographies of all of our new teachers. To that point, in my email blast, I referred to a number. We have hired, filling, this is very important for the public, filling resignations, leaves of absence, retirements, and individuals who were not renewed, 27 positions. We have hired 27 new teachers. None of those are new positions. To each of those teachers, they have replaced somebody who left the Milton Public Schools. There are two new positions to the Milton Public Schools. Working with the finance subcommittee, again, we've had parents who've come to citizen speak, that we, in past years, when budgets were better, we had reading teachers in the Milton Public Schools in the primary grades. A reading teacher is an essential part of a school, of an elementary school. When you have reading teachers, they're able to work with small groups of children. And many times, working with individual and small groups of children, work on their issues so that these children don't then have to enter into an individual special education plan. I've seen very successful reading teachers working with children at K-1 and providing that kind of support, that you don't have to then write an individual, sped individual educational plan. And so working with the finance subcommittee, that's a huge need in the Milton Public Schools. At the same time that we were discussing this need from the stimulus money, we were notified that we were given one-time funds, an increase of $107,000. We went to the finance subcommittee, communicated with Ms. Sheridan, and I'm very pleased, and I think the Milton Public School parents will be very pleased, that we've appointed one English reading specialist teacher and one French immersion reading teacher specialist. The response from the staff has been phenomenal. And I'm also very pleased to announce tonight that those, we posted those positions, we had individuals apply in and outside of the system. And we have appointed a veteran, outstanding, Colicott first grade teacher, Mary Ellen Burke, to the English position. And to the French immersion position, we have appointed Kate Laval, a very successful French immersion first grade teacher. So they both know the first and second grade program, they know the staff, they'll hit the road running. And that's a really wonderful news story for our students, for our achievement issues, and by parents and students has been positively received. When I finish, Mr. Phelan's going to touch upon the professional development briefly and will highlight it in my email blast that's been going on. I encourage parents who have been calling the office to go to the web. A reminder, school starts next Wednesday, September 1. And for kindergarten is on Tuesday, September 7. Our teachers will come in next Monday and Tuesday per their contract. And again, have professional development on Tuesday and work with me and the leadership team all day Monday. Today, these individuals I referred to, we had a strategic planning session. And I want to recognize Ken Quigley in Curry College. He is a very gracious host. He opens his buildings. We were at the student center. They facilitated us for breakfast and lunch. We had a full day of strategic planning. I want to recognize John Phelan, Matt Gillis, Sean Walsh, and Charlene Roach. We did a lot of work in preparation for this day. And again, Mr. Bowles and several administrators responded. I said to Mr. Huban this afternoon, you put all that work into it and when it's positive and everybody feels empowered and anxious to begin the school year, it's just invigorating to everyone. So we had a very successful strategic planning session. And then at the end of the session, I had spoken to Mrs. Kelly. We have new administrators. You had also met the two new elementary principals and we have a new math department head. So that's a large number of administrators on our team. So Mr. Phelan and I talked this summer about some kind of experience, a professional development experience. a professional development experience that will bring our administrators together, have them build off one another. And we've hired, uh, Dr. John Dioria, a very successful, well-known Wellesley Middle School principal who published for the last thirty years. He then has been recently the superintendent in Canton. He's retired and he works for Teachers 21. He came in and did a supervision and evaluation session and, um, really engaged all of these administrators. We have set up six sessions, um, again, to one of your charges to me, after the school day, from three to five, or three to six o'clock during five or six months during the school year, to develop, uh, again, a network, a support system for these new administrators, really to build on their skills. So the strategic planning, we'll speak to that later. We have created our strategic plan now. The strategic plan will go into the hands of the site councils and, uh, come back to you for reporting out starting in November. I wanted to refer to the press that you may have all read today, that Massachusetts has, uh, received official notification today that they're one of the top ten states that have been, um, winners in the race to the top. And, uh, our, the state's application scored four hundred and seventy-one points out of five hundred points. If you remember the discussion we had last year with the school committee and the Massa, the Milton Educators Association, these funds were going to get the Milton Public Schools approximately fifteen thousand dollars. And we evaluated internally, uh, the level of work that, and involved in that grant, the reporting that would have to be done. And we weren't one of the districts that signed on. We worked as a leadership team today and it's going to be very interesting when this grant rolls out, what kind of opportunities are available to the entire state after the districts who signed on are involved in benefit from those funds. But, um, that's exciting news for the state today. I would encourage parents, we're taking telephone calls to go to the website for, uh, the deadlines and the dates for the athletic signup. And I also referred to Charlene Roach tonight. Charlene Roach, for the last two years, has sat right over there in the front row and been a very successful, uh, taking the minutes for the school committee. Charlene Roach, uh, again, these school committee members, you can tell, read those minutes. They edit them, they critique them, uh, they take them seriously. And she was a very, very successful writer for the school committee. I can attest to her confidentiality, um, working with us and going into executive session. We posted, when Bev Quinn retired her job, we had over fifty applicants. We interviewed every Milton resident. We had very, very successful qualified candidates who went to the last round and we appointed, uh, Ms. Charlene Roach to that position. So Charlene Roach is the new administrative assistant to the superintendent. And we have posted, um, and we encourage, um, the viewing public, anyone interested to go onto our website, we have posted the secretary to the school committee and we'll be interviewing to fill that position. Until we do, Ms. Roach agreed to view your film and continue to take the minutes until we fill the position. For a moment, I'd like to turn it over to, uh, Mr. Phelan to just highlight some of the professional development.
So I think Mrs. Kelly has a question or comment.
I'm sorry, before we move on, I, I don't want to get too far away from the race to the top. I haven't done a lot of research on this, but I thought I've been hearing something about if we receive that, uh, that money as a state, that we would then change our curriculum standards to align with the nation as opposed to our very well-defined and, and created, um, standards. Is, is, is any of that, you know, real? And, and I guess I'd like at some point in a future meeting to put that, you know, topic on the table because I think Massachusetts has put a lot of effort into developing what I think many believe are very good and high-quality standards. And I would hate to see that effort sort of be pushed to the side as part of this process, so.
Well, it's very interesting, Ms. Kelly, that you brought that up because, in fact, it is the dialogue among administrators and teachers that the Common Core has been accepted. And the discussions with us today, uh, we, we have our curriculum leaders examining what the differences are. And I'll tell you, Martha Sherman at the elementary level said, you know, we don't want to abandon the standards that are in the Massachusetts frameworks that don't exist in the Common Core. And so, these discussions are going to be huge because MCAS is based on the Massachusetts frameworks. What are the changes going to be? And so, those dialogues are ongoing now. We're waiting for direction from DESC. We'll be attending all of the workshops and, um, the sessions to keep ourselves involved. And walking up tonight, Ms. Sheridan asked me at the next meeting if I'd report out and give you an update on that. So you have a feeling for what's going on. But it's, your question is the, very, very timely. And, um, as one administrator said today, a teacher's going to come back and think that they're not going to be tested by MCAS anymore. There still is going to be testing, but when the standards change, what are the changes going to be?
I think there are a lot, lot of questions surrounding it and that's exactly why I asked, um, Ms. Gormly to speak to it at the next meeting as well. Thanks, Mrs. Kelly.
So, Mr. Phelan, might you highlight?
Sure, we, uh, the Milton Public School staff and administration, teachers, teacher aides, were all busy, very busy getting PD and getting ready for professional development this summer and this coming fall. Uh, over the summer, we had teachers, uh, receive PD in math content area at the elementary level. There was curriculum writing at the elementary level. Full day K curriculum alignment, uh, was done this summer. Uh, the high school staff, uh, a small crew went to do, uh, advanced placement training. As each year, Dr. Girard sends a whole group of teachers up for advanced placement training. We had SMARTboard training for staff, inclusion training for regular ed and special educators. We were very fortunate, uh, as Superintendent Gormly alluded to, to have administrative PD for our, uh, new principals, assistant principals, and, uh, existing administrators and curriculum coordinators that started today with Dr. Dioria that will continue through the year. And we're also excited to, uh, and we have been negotiating with Bridgewater State College to do some partnering around, uh, math content area training with elementary teachers and special education training and certification for, uh, any and all teachers for the Milton Public Schools. So, um, it has been a busy summer and it will be a busy fall. The dates of August 30th and 31st are days where we do, uh, some professional development as well. Where we'll update our staff, entire staff, aides, teachers, custodians, uh, administrative assistants on all the laws that they need to be aware of, uh, the upcoming bullying, uh, policy and legislation that's in front of us that we have, uh, prepared for, all the way down to sexual harassment and how to keep appropriate records. They'll all be informed about that. And, um, we look forward to providing every level of our, uh, Milton Public School staff the appropriate training that they need to ensure a good school year. So it's been a busy summer, it'll be a busy fall, and the teachers have done a great amount of work. And we appreciate their, uh, the dedication to taking advantage of these opportunities.
I don't think Mr. Phelan's word busy really characterizes enough the, the summer for our administrators. I don't think anyone realizes, and I want to recognize Mr. Phelan and Mr. Gillis. To Mr. Phelan's, uh, strength and the interviewing, when we refer to these positions, every position is posted, coordinating all of the applications to get into the hands of the principals and curriculum leaders to assure that everyone is interviewed, to work with those administrators on the feedback, then to set up second or third interviews to do the reference checks. A tremendous amount of work goes into every one of these hires. These individuals are in these positions, they're fully vetted. We had outstanding pools. Monday, all of the teachers that we've hired voluntarily spent a full day with their mentors. We have a formal mentoring program. This is beyond their contract. And all the feedback was from the mentors and the administrators. This is a great team of new teachers coming into Milton Public Schools. So, uh, I want to, on behalf of the Milton Public Schools, to Mr. Phelan, thank him, leading that personnel charge, that's the hard work, that's the most important work. And the professional development to a teacher and administrator is phenomenal, so thank you. And Mr. Gillis, uh, working on our budget, closing out the year, opening the year, working with our finance subcommittee. And, um, these two administrators, um, if they, uh, have a commitment on a half a day, they're back here at night on Saturdays and Sundays. And the community is very, very fortunate to have John Phelan and Matt Gillis working on behalf of our students and teachers. So, again, they wear cod this summer. Busy isn't the word that I think really characterizes, uh, the summer, but it was very productive.
So, Ms. Gormly, the only one that was left out of those accolades was you.
I keep up with them.
Yeah, right. We know that you set the pace and you set the bar very high.
Lot of support from the school committee.
Work amazingly on behalf of every single child in the Milton Public Schools. So thank you to all of you. Mrs. Kelly?
If I could just go back to professional development, um, I, I don't know whether it hasn't been reported out in previous summers, but it seems to me that that was a lot of activity that you had going on over the summer. Is that an increase over typical summers or is that really what happens every summer and we just haven't heard about it perhaps?
It's, it's a bit of an increase and we, uh, got a professional development committee together over May and June to talk about how we wanted to proceed and take advantage of those summer months to get work done that, that you can't do during the school year. And so, we tried to shape all of our PD and give, give our staff summer opportunities and then we'll give them Saturday and fall and, and winter opportunities. So, we tried to chunk it out, um, because some PD you can do over a course of a couple of hours here and a couple of hours there. And then some PD in training and curriculum writing, you really need chunks of time, like during a day or three days in a row, which you can't, um, or would not want to pull teachers out of the classroom for. So, we, uh, kind of provide a menu for the staff to take advantage of and direct it the way, uh, that we would like it to go in terms of what we need to get done as a school district to move forward. So we did take a little bit of a different approach this summer.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Mr. Huben?
Back in the spring, I had, uh, sent you an email, Superintendent Gormly, about the Pledge of Allegiance. I understand that, uh, some schools were doing it in the morning, some schools were not. And you had mentioned that you would bring that up with your administration, administrative team over the summer. Have you done that and did you reach a conclusion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Huben. We met with our leadership team and we have two new principals out of our six. So, we went all over the school committee policy. I explained to them, we live by these policies. Beverly Quinn and Charlene Roach pick out the policies and every, um, one of our meetings, we highlight your policies. I brought out your policy on the Pledge of Allegiance. And to an administrator, they enthusiastically agreed, uh, to do the Pledge of Allegiance from, uh, the main office. That will assure us that every student, every teacher participates. Again, there isn't a classroom where the Pledge of Allegiance isn't taking place because, um, somebody forgot or decided not, uh, to, um, pledge of allegiance every morning of the school year. So, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. After you did, we stayed with the press following that. And, uh, I think that for the Milton Public School students and teachers, uh, that's a great solution.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huben. Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Quick question and, Mary, I don't know if you know this, but a parent asked me and I thought it was a good question. Library hours for the high school and for the Pierce?
Oh, that's a great question.
Kelly Field is closed, so there's more pressure on sports teams up here.
That's a great question.
So are parents going to be able to have their kids here?
Yes.
Later?
Both, both the Pierce Library and the Milton High School Library will be open after school through the after-school library homework club. I don't have the exact hours, do you know the hours at Pierce?
Uh, the, there will be two to three days at Pierce until 3:30, not, not five, but I think traditionally they've been two to three. And last year at the high school, it was every day until four. And Dr. Girard is in the process of, uh, ensuring that that will happen again this year.
And we'll put that in my email blast and I'll ask the principals at those levels to publish and republish and remind parents. That's a great question for our back-to-school information.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gormly.
My pleasure.
We'll move on to Consolidated Facilities Subcommittee Report. Mr. Huben, please.
Sure. Uh, you have three of the, um, most previous minutes in your package, pretty much outlining what we've been doing so far. At our last meeting, um, Superintendent Gormly, myself and the committee members, sat down and ironed out, uh, what we believe to be the close to the final draft memorandum of agreement, uh, between the town and the school committee to go forward with this proposal. We still have a couple of legal questions that need to be, um, answered before we get to that final point. As far as the timeline's concerned, um, we're looking to have the, uh, MOA come out of the Consolidated Facilities Subcommittee sometime around September 1st. Have it viewed by both the school committee and the select board. Have a joint meeting between the two on the 15th of September. Again, that's a tentative date, um, to discuss any issues that might arise from this, concerns, get that all straightened out. And hopefully, uh, towards the end of September or our first meeting in October, bring it to this table for discussion and vote. So that's, uh, the timeline that we're working on, um, and the business to date.
Any questions or discussion? Mrs. Kelly?
Is it possible to get, um, a copy of the MOA as it stands right now so that we can at least get, so that, it's one thing if you're wordsmithing, it's another if you're introducing new concepts or whatever. So at least we'll be able to get the concepts that are covered in it, um, so that we can...
I'd like to get the three legal questions answered before I do that, but hopefully I can get that done this week and get it out to you before the weekend.
Well, just to clarify, so the, um, Consolidated Facilities Committee meets again on the first, September 1st. So probably after that meeting and before that meeting on the 15th, you'll have plenty of time to look at it.
But we, we should have it before the end of the week.
Okay.
And, I mean, could you just cover sort of the broad, um, topics? That, you know, what, we were at a point where we were saying, no, we didn't think this would work. So some things have changed and you might...
Well, I think the, uh, the biggest issue was the, um, the timeframe of how we get to the point of having a separate, um, facilities department for all the buildings. Superintendent Gormly feels comfortable with, um, uh, up to a two-and-a-half-year timeframe from the time that it's signed. So basically, um, two years from, uh, June 30th of '11. So, you know, that, that's the basic timeframe that we've discussed. I think there's, uh, in the memorandum, it says up to twenty-four months after the start of the new fiscal year. So, if in fact the bargaining goes on and it happens sooner, that would be up to Kevin, uh, Kevin Mern and Mary Gormly. The second sticking point was, um, what, the prenup, we call it the prenup. What happens if we get into this and it just isn't working? How do you separate? And, um, basically, they're going to, uh, this department would keep two separate books for the probationary period of that timeframe. And at that point, it would start to meld together. And I think that was acceptable to the administration. I think the, uh, again, the third part was some legal questions as to, um, moving, I think under the Ed reform laws, the principal might have more supervisory, um, accountability than was written into the MOA. So we have Joe Emerson taking a look at that. And then a final one was, um, the custodians, who would have the hiring and firing of the custodians. And for, uh, the length of the probationary period, two and a half years, that would remain with the superintendent. And at that point, um, would go over to this new department. And the, one of the legal questions that we're working out, do they remain members of, of the school department or do they become now town employees, uh, under this new department? So, that still has to be worked out. But those, those are the major issues that have been under discussion.
And one of the things that we had discussed as part of this process was the, the perhaps need for a tie-breaking, um, ability, however that was to work out. Is that something that's covered in the...
It was written in that it would be, um, two members of the Board of Selectmen and two members of the school committee that, uh, this would be brought to. And then, one of the other legal questions was, uh, if you have two members of the Board of Selectmen, is that a selectmen's meeting? a selectmen's meeting? So, that's being reviewed as well. So, that language is in there. It's just we're trying to figure out what's the best way to do it.
Great. Thank you.
And just to clarify for people who may not know what the tiebreaker, what the need would be for a tiebreaker, that if, for example, there was something that came up that the superintendent felt one way and the town administrator felt another way, and that they couldn't come to an agreement, then we needed some opportunity, some way to help settle that. So, we continue to look into that. Mrs. Kelly, just...
Just to follow up on that, certainly if it was two members of the school committee and one member of the Board of Selectmen, you would not have the Board of Selectmen issue, and we would probably always win. So, that might be something to consider.
That's what they figured out.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
The minutes are really helpful. So, if we could keep getting them, I don't know if we got them before or not, but they're really helpful so we know what's going on. And then I know you were talking about staffing proposals and some compromises about that. So, the next meeting, will those be talked about and then brought here? You know, how many from the school department would go? How many from DPW would go initially? Wasn't there a timeline of, you don't have to answer it now, but could we get that information next time?
That information is readily available. It's not a problem.
Okay. So, for next month, that would be great. Thank you.
The other thing, and just talking about that, we did discuss our last meeting job descriptions, and the school department has supplied the committee, Subcommittee with the positions that would be transferred. The town has supplied the Subcommittee with their job descriptions. Jerry Colhane, who was the, on the Subcommittee, who was very knowledgeable in the area of facilities, is reviewing the job descriptions right now. And I believe in our next meeting, September 1st, that'll be the major portion of the meeting is making sure that the job descriptions are up to date. And obviously, these will be drafts, because whoever the director is that comes in, he or she may want to modify them somewhat. But at least they'll have, you know, some, a working document to go from.
Good. Any other questions? Great. Thank you for that report, Chris. You might as well just, you're doing so well, keep going and talk about the Policy Subcommittee, please.
Sure. The Policy Subcommittee met over the summer to address some of the issues that have been brought up in meetings this spring. The first thing on the agenda is the Policy JEB, which deals with the entrance age of children into kindergarten and first grade. There's been some consternation with some parents as to what exactly the wording was, because it did say if you have to be five before September 1st. Is that on September 1st, or is it before September 1st? And then, some parents were saying, well, my child is September 7th. That's close enough, right? So, basically, what we want to do is just have a clarification, and the entrance age clarification that we come up with is on or before August 31st. And that was unanimous recommendation for a change by the Policy Subcommittee for the school committee to discuss, and it was recommended also by the administration. So, basically, number one, in the entrance age policy would be changed to read, the entrance age of the, the entrance age to the kindergarten is five years on or before August 31st. The entrance age to first grade is six years on or before August 31st. We, the administration felt that that clarification would help them greatly with the registration process. So, again, it was unanimously recommended by the Policy Subcommittee to be brought to the school committee for first reading on this change. Would you like me to continue with the report, or do you want to answer questions on that?
Does anyone have any questions around that? Glenn?
Again, just to reiterate, this is a, really, that sounds like it was the intent all along, but this seems more...
That's correct.
Wordsmithing than anything else to try to make it precise.
That's correct.
And just in that same light, this is something that's really a sticking point, because the state doesn't have, I mean, there isn't a state date. So, some school districts, I know at one time Milton had the end of December.
It was December 31st.
Right. And so, is this, you know, August 31st date, is that pretty, is that, is that the common date in the state? Do we have a sense of that, or...
We changed it. We surveyed neighboring communities.
Okay.
With neighboring communities it is, but we didn't go statewide with it.
It's something that would be helpful for kids, you know, moving in and out of school districts to have a statewide date, but I thank you for your work in that. And, Mrs. Kelly, did you want to ask a question?
Just in terms, how much of an issue is, I mean, is this, you know, something comes up once or twice a year, or how much of an issue is this?
It happened over the last couple of years where there happened to be a couple of students that were born on September 1, and they really wanted to know, does that mean, does honor before August 31st means before September 1, in a little more definitive language? So, to clearly state that that's the deadline, and in all honesty, the kindergarten process, we want it to be as clear as possible with what our expectations were for the entrance age for kindergarten, for first grade, that if you, and then if you do kindergarten, the expectation is that you go to first grade. And this is just one more piece of being as clear as possible with the parent population coming into the Milton Public Schools.
Thank you.
Again, this is the first reading, so at our next meeting, we can have further discussion if anyone has any questions. Also, during our meeting over the summer, we looked into a couple of other issues that were brought to this table. The first was exchange students, whether they would be allowed to walk with the other students during graduation if they were here during that time. It was the view of the Policy Subcommittee that that was more of an administration policy as opposed to a school committee policy. And I believe the administration feels strongly that they do not walk with our students because they do not spend their time here and fulfill all the graduation requirements. So, they're going to get that policy in writing and distribute it to the people that do have exchange students when those exchange students come to the school, so they know ahead of time what the policy is.
Mrs. Kelly?
Just, would something like that go in the handbook? I'm just trying to figure out, is there a place that that belongs, just for public knowledge?
Might be something that the school psych council can discuss at the high school.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
But...
If I might, this, this issue, you get involved with children with IEPs, and again, we have had extensive discussions with Dr. Drother about this issue. So, it's not a decision that we came to lightly.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
I know that we've gotten some comments and questions about this when it's come up. So, the clearer we are about this and why, and how many exchange students do we actually have, and what organization is it that sponsors them? It's usually the Rotary Club.
It's the Rotary.
So, can the Rotary Club really have this really specifically, so we can avoid some heartache?
It will come up again. We'll clarify it.
It's a good, you know, it's fine policy, but it causes some heartache, and if people know it upfront, I think it would be better.
The Policy Subcommittee did review the complaint, the procedure process that is in place, that we did vote at a spring meeting, some changes as to who would be the grievance officer. But that, there was no changes recommended by the Policy Subcommittee to that policy that was voted on this spring. At our, one of our previous meetings, we suspended the rules for the superintendent's evaluation. That has come back to the Policy Subcommittee for review, and we are looking to the superintendent's organization, the school committee's organization, as well as other opportunities to find out what a new policy should be based on the new open meeting law. And we're hoping to have that done before the end of the year. Till then, the superintendent's evaluation will go forward as outlined previously with maybe one or two changes to dates, but it should all be done by the end of September. The last one, which we thought was an important one, is how does the school district respond to the media? What media outlets get access to the building? Who gets priority? We have a couple of blog sites in Milton now that are part of larger communities like AOL that are regularly reporting now on Milton happenings. So, that is being handled. We're looking at different policies to find out if there are any currently, and that is ongoing, and hopefully we'll have something before the end of the year as well. So, we have two things that are outstanding. Oh, also, there was some discussion as to how do teachers and sports captains, the athletic director, how do they correspond with students? You know, they're supposed to use headline, or the email blasts, or the all-call that you get, the phone calls. But there's been instances in other school districts where teachers have used Facebook or Twitter to contact students, and we want to get a handle on that before that gets to a place where we don't want it to be. So, that's also being looked at as part of this media package that we hope to bring to you before the end of the year. And that was our meeting this summer. Do you have anything to add to that, Kristen?
No, we've covered everything.
And that'll be the end of my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Kelly, do you have a question?
Just, I thought at one point, and I may have been the only one who raised it, was whether we were going to look at our student assignment policy. And in that, we did some things a little bit differently with regard to, I think, French and English, that we wanted to document that into our policy. I'm not sure, maybe I'm, people look at me like I have seven heads.
No, no. What I had heard was class size, review the class size policy. So, we looked at it. We didn't think there was any changes that needed to be made, because we pretty much gutted it down to something that's very manageable.
Right. No, I don't think this was class size. I think this was related to sort of the choosing of programs and how the lottery, you know, basically how we went through that process last time. Were there things that we learned, and is there something we can put in writing that would clarify for parents what the process is every year for this? I think that's what we've talked about, and it may, again, it may have only been me, and maybe I should revisit with the administration.
Would that be a policy, or just a procedural update? Is it...
Right. I'm not sure where it lies. I just think the issue, in terms of just having parents know exactly what the process is, how it happens, how it will happen, might be worthy of documenting somewhere, wherever it belongs. I'm not exactly sure. Maybe in policy, maybe in something else.
Okay. Ms. Gormly?
I'll look at that with Mr. Huban, and again, after last year when we made changes and it went through the late spring, it would be worth clearly communicating this fall on behalf of the superintendent's office. So, I'll look at it and bring any recommendation to Mr. Huban.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Okay. For my chairman's report, I would like to also thank the custodians in the Milton Public Schools, because as you walk through these buildings, they just shine, and the kids are going to be so excited to come back and parents and walk into these buildings. It really is amazing, the work that they've done over the summer. So, thank you to all of them. The school committee members have a revised school committee calendar in front of you. This is important for the public to know as well. Due to a scheduling conflict, we will be changing our school committee dates to Wednesday evenings. So, beginning in September, on September 8th, we will meet the first and third Wednesday of every month. So, not Tuesdays. This is our last Tuesday meeting. We'll switch to Wednesday meetings.
That's only temporary, correct?
It's through the end of December. We've made this calendar for now, I believe.
So, are we back to Tuesdays?
We'll look at that really soon. Really soon. But we just wanted to iron out all the dates and see if there were any conflicts right here for the, for the fall. So, as they are, it's September 8th and 15th, and September 20th, I'm sorry, the 15th is our joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen. September 20th is a special town meeting, and then September 22nd is our regular school committee meeting. And then it will be October 6th and 20th, November 3rd and 17th, December 8th. We have one meeting scheduled for December like we did last year. Yes, Mr. Huban?
Was there any problem with Taliban coverage?
I notified them of that, and we're gonna do our best. They're assuring me that this can be covered, so. Thank you. Okay. There is something that's out on, do you want to talk about this? I'm sorry.
No, just to mention, just to mention that the calendar, we have indicates, we have Tuesdays in the spring still.
They are Tuesdays in the spring.
These dates here for the spring.
Are Tuesdays.
Are Tuesdays.
January 4th, 18th, and all are back to Tuesdays, at least according to this.
Thank you.
And, Ms. Sorry, it's still on the calendar.
That's okay.
Can I ask as a topic that a residency update be provided sometime, you know, in these first fall meetings, just to give us a sense of where we're at with that and...
I left off my report, and I had been asked by Mrs. Kelly and Ms. Sheridan, with the enrollment, all of the classroom assignments have been sent out. So, if any parent viewing or guardian has not received their child's assignment, they can call the homeschool. Within the next two days, all of the individuals new to the community who have enrolled their children during the summer, we have waited until the elementary secretary's return to school to open up all the mail. Somebody may have moved the request for records, and now we have enrollment numbers that reflect the correct number of students in the elementary schools. Mr. Phelan and I will be assigning in the next two days. So, all of the residents who recently moved over the summer, they will get calls from us within the next two days with their elementary assignment. I'll begin as a Friday emailing for the first two weeks of school, including the school committee, if they're interested, our enrollment sheet, and so that you can see where our enrollments are going. And again, it's a volatile number during the first two weeks of school. And if you have any questions on that, and so to Mrs. Kelly's point on residency, we'll do a report, and we'll also report out formally on enrollment during the next two meetings.
Thank you.
Can I pick it up to me?
Yeah. There is a, a grant was written this fall. Ms. Gormly, do you want to speak about the Kohl's Cares?
Yes. Perhaps Mr. Phelan is more articulate on this than I am, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Well, first of all, I don't have a Facebook, and now that the Superintendent's... That's why she's forwarding this conversation to me.
You have children.
I do have children. They probably have Facebooks, and they do have Facebooks. Denise Querly, PTO in, involved in Cunningham Parent, forward in the Milton Foundation for Education, forwarded us a grant from the Kohl's Company, and it is a nationwide grant whereby districts will have to have, will be able to access the grant or win the grant if they have the most Facebook...
Votes.
Votes from a period of time of mid-August to Labor Day. So, you had to pick what the grant would go towards, and there was a lot of email traffic as to what might be the best area to target the funds for that we could present on the web so people could be enthused about donating to Milton Public Schools. Given that our parents and our players and our coaches and our administration and teachers work so hard on behalf of sports, we decided to make Milton High Athletics the target of the fundraising, so we could get high school students excited about participating in this fundraiser. Ms. Querly contacted Superintendent Gormly, who brought in our grant writer. Again, Chris Masowski is the grant writer who has, works with us through the Milton Foundation for Education Funding, and he took on the grant. He read the particulars in the specs for it, and had a meeting with Dr. John Drother and Athletic Director Steve Traister. They started the channel through the coaches to set up some profiles of students, so we could put on a few faces that would get people excited about this fundraising opportunity.
So, can I just stop you right there, because it's not really a fundraising?
I'm sorry. It is a, an attempt to win a grant.
Right.
So, it is...
Five hundred thousand dollars.
It's $500,000.
Isn't it?
Yes.
Five hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
Yes.
So, Superintendent Gormly immediately put this email out to the entire Milton Public Schools community to... Schools community to give them the site that they can go on and log on. People have to have a Facebook account to vote and they are able to create their own Facebook and go on and vote. We encourage all of our students who have Facebook accounts and all of our community members and parents that have Facebook accounts to go on and vote and send it on to their Facebook connected friends. I don't know the appropriate terminology for that, given that I don't have one. But, it is a very exciting grant opportunity and I think that using this mechanism to get our students and community and parents involved is unique in terms of utilizing Facebook in a positive manner. I know it does bring us some concern, especially at the middle school and the younger students who tend to use it, but this is a tool that a lot of people are using, obviously throughout the world wide web. And we think it's a great opportunity for the Milton Public Schools. So, we encourage everybody to go on the website. We will put the link on our website for people to go on. We encourage every student and every parent to go on and vote for the Milton Public Schools.
And you can place five votes for the Milton Public Schools. So, when you go, when you log on, you can, you can vote for five different schools or you can vote for Milton five times. And so, we encourage you to vote for Milton five times. And we need an awful lot of votes because I don't want to name any names, but there's an exam school in Boston that has a lot, that's also in the running, that's getting a lot of press. So, we really need to step this up and.
Deadline?
Is Labor Day.
Labor Day.
So, if people do have Facebook accounts and are interested, we'll put the information on our homepage and people can connect and forward it to your friends. You can send emails, you don't, even if you're not on Facebook, you can send an email out, you know, to your friend list and tell them if they're on Facebook that they can log on and vote for Milton Public Schools. And the school that gets the most votes wins five hundred thousand dollars. And for us, that would mean no fees for sports in the Milton Public Schools this year.
For one year.
For one year, this year, right.
And we couldn't think of a better group of parents to support because there's a lot of fundraising up at the high school to support sports. And we thought it might be a great way to show some support to them that we are focusing our opportunity on sports for this year. They've been working hard over the last few years as well.
Is there a question down here?
So, is there a tally that you can see how you're doing?
Yes.
Okay.
Does anyone know where we are? We need a lot of votes.
That's my first question. Second question is, can we put this like in the newspaper and tell, you know, all of Milton, hop onto Facebook and vote for us five times?
Hopefully.
Well, cable is one venue, you know, when you're doing PR, you need to use all your available channels and certainly, you know, maybe we could even do a show on cable. But, you know, to put it in the Milton Times and in the websites, oh, two, one, eight, six, you know, all of those places, just to use all of the connections.
Can we send out an alert now on it?
We have, we already have.
Have?
Yeah.
I think you said it was in your email blast or was it an alert now?
Yeah, I don't think I got it.
It could be sent again.
It was a separate email blast from John Drother and Steve Traister.
From Steve Traister, phone call from Steve Traister.
But, what's the gap at this point?
I, I don't know.
Fifty thousand, last I heard.
Fifty thousand, okay.
We can do that if everyone gets five votes.
We can.
There you go.
We can do it, it's not out of our reach.
Very exciting opportunity and thank you to Denise Querly for bringing it forward.
Yes, exactly. And that's just the kind of partnership that we need, you know, people to come forward with grants that you hear about, notify Chris and, you know, he took it and ran with it. So, thank you to all. Okay, Mrs. Kelly, we'll move to you for a finance committee update, please.
So, we haven't been meeting as frequently as we usually do and we're starting our weekly meetings soon, is that correct, Ms. Gormly?
Absolutely.
The first thing I want to talk about is the camera and security system. As everyone knows, we had some issues over the past year and we have looked at that issue very seriously and we believe that installing cameras in both the middle school and the high school would be a, a good thing for the environment at both schools. And so, we've been looking at ways to pay for it. I think the administration has reached out to many different grant opportunities and I just asked the administration to sort of give us an update as to where we're at with that. I know that the school committee as a whole voted over the summer to appropriate two hundred thousand dollars towards, I'm sorry, up to two hundred thousand dollars towards this purchase. So, if we could just get an update as to where we're at with that process.
And Mr. Gillis is going to give that update, would you also address the two other organizations that we received money from?
Sure.
No, oh, without, Mrs. Kelly, okay.
Okay, we did receive two other funding sources. The first is the Copeland Foundation. As many folks in town know, they've come through the Milton Public Schools many times in the past. Copeland Fieldhouse is a prime example and other, many, many other things. And the school building committee, we value engineered the security systems out earlier on in the process when the committee wasn't sure they were going to be able to live within budget. Addition renovation projects can be a little cumbersome when you're going through and you're knocking down walls and you find things. So, being conservative, they cut out some of the things in the project that they normally would have liked to have done. And now that the construction's largely complete and they're just closing things out, the school building committee agreed to give us fifty thousand dollars. So, it's fifty thousand from Copeland, fifty thousand from school building and up to two hundred thousand dollars from the general fund budget. So, that gives us a ceiling of about three hundred thousand dollars to, to work with. And we, we had a mandatory meeting with the five vendors on the Massachusetts State Contract that just went live in June. And all five vendors came, we walked through the schools, we pointed out things with the principals that were trouble areas and we did the interior and the exterior of the schools. Deputy Chief Charles Paris came with us as well as the, the town received a grant and has eleven different traffic cameras in, in different areas in the town. And we wanted our exterior cameras to tie in with the Milton Police cameras so they could see what's going on outside the buildings. And we made that clear to folks along with all the requirements in the state contract and, and some of our own local requirements. On August 3rd, we got our proposals back and we received three proposals from the five bidders. One of them, I don't think, was ready to do this type of job and the other said he would like, you know, his chance when I asked for the, asked for them to sharpen their pencils. So, of the three bidders we had, one had to withdraw two days later, they ran into trouble with the states and then that left us with, with two bidders. And there was definitely some discrepancy in the number of cameras that each proposed because we asked for a turnkey proposal to meet our needs. We don't know exactly how many cameras we should have, we know what spaces we want covered, but what the best way to do that, we were hoping to get ideas and suggestions from them. So, we still had all three proposals to look at and the prices were fairly close on the, on the outdoor cameras. There was some discrepancy on the indoor cameras and we've been working that out. One of the discrepancies was software so that the police could tie in. We're probably not going to be able to do that, that would cost about a hundred thousand dollars to be able to add that, which would knock us out of our, our budget range.
But, they will be tied into the outside cameras.
They absolutely will be tied into the outside cameras. So, I have a meeting tomorrow with, with one of the vendors and probably the day after with the other. Hopefully, we'll be finalizing who we're going to go with via the state contract. We've had that somewhat vetted with the state contract manager that oversees this is we'll be the, one of the first ones to buy off of this new state contract. And Deb Combra from the Operational Services Division's been helpful. Mary Gormly also asked in an email blast out, out to parents if they had any knowledge in, in the security field, you know, to help. And we did get help, you know, formally from one parent and informally from another parent that wanted to remain anonymous, but that helps been invaluable to me in, in coming up with analysis for, for what our needs are. And, and so have the principals, John Drother and James Jet and help from Bill Ritchie and Charlie Paris. You know, we, we should be signing on to a, a contract with them soon and then they'll be installing it this fall. And most of that work will probably be done during, you know, second shift and off hours when, when the kids aren't going to be cutting through the hallways. Although the outdoor cameras, I've just told them when they need to avoid the buses coming in and the buses going out and they're, they're fine with that. I guess at this point, if there's any questions, I'll take them, but it's still a work in progress.
So, Matt, just a couple of things. So, the timeline you're looking at is completion by October, November?
Well, I was hoping for the end of October, but that, I'm trying to, trying to get the vendors to give me a reasonable timeline. I don't want to force them into something where they're rushing. And, you know, we didn't want to rush to get the cameras in just for the sake of having them in and then be patching things up and making it an ongoing project. We're trying to do it once and well and then hopefully, if things change down the road, we're adding only a handful of cameras. And that, that capacity will be built into the system as it was from, from all three proposals that we had seen so far. They all honored and followed the, the specification requirements. But, the goal is to do it really well, not really quickly. And we'll work out what the, what the, depending on what they can staff. I mean, both of the two finalists had said that if they get a notice to proceed, they can have people here in three days. They just want to start cutting their cables, you know, back at their facilities and bringing them out and they will order, order the parts. They've already specified the parts, model and manufacturer that they're proposing and I've asked for some, some alternates, but they basically know exactly what they're going to do when they've been through our site and seen where everything is. And we can schedule times when they can work largely unimpeded.
And then, just when you say that they'll be, the outside cameras will be tied into the Milton Police Station, can you clarify, does that mean that a police officer will be sitting looking at these tapes at all times or it will just be on a feed that we could go back and review as needed?
It'll be on a feed, the principals will be, will be able to see the outside cameras as well, but the police department will have them with a person that can, that can view them, but there's not going to be somebody sitting there watching, let's just say there's a total of thirty-five cameras in, in town. They're not going to be sitting there watching them all the time, they'll be recording them twenty-four, seven, so if there is an incident, they can go back and they, they also, the software lets you check on motion, additional motion. So, you can check on when something happened inside the building, they'll record on motion. So, we won't have a bunch of video when the hall's empty, for example.
Thank you. Mr. Kehn?
Matt, I, I just want to know, how do you determine how many cameras are sufficient? Because you have three bids and I know one of the bidders dropped out. But, the, assuming that he was still in there, there's a difference of forty cameras between the lowest bidder and the second bidder. And then, he dropped out, so the next guy that goes into second place is a difference of thirty cameras. So, who makes the determination as to how many cameras are, are enough?
Well, we do have floor plans, which, which I'd require them to do and where they would place the cameras. And then, whether they're fixed or whether they're partially zooming in motion where they rotate to, to catch things. And the police have a consultant that they've worked with as well that will help us and the principals inside the building have a pretty large say in, you know, this is a hotspot where we've had some problems and I want a camera, you know, coming this way and coming that way to make sure we can just see who came and went in case there's an issue that we, that we want to look at. So, you know, in my opinion, you know, one of the proposers proposed low in the number of cameras and based on their plans, they didn't capture everything that we pointed out to them, but that could just be a strategy to make sure that we're talking to them. And then, you know, when you think you're going to be one of five, you may want to draw more attention to yourself as opposed to when you're at the point where you're one of two, because we're basically going to get them both to be saying the same number of cameras in the same places and what's your, what's your cost? And we know the warranties and the performance specs are going to be the same because we've set the performance specs and the state's set the warranty, so we're looking for the best practical value and then that the references check out, that they've done this successfully in other public schools or private schools in Massachusetts and, you know, that, that they've also done it or for other municipalities, public work.
But, but also, and, and that's admirable, I admire that, but when you're talking cost, the, the difference between the lowest bidder and the, the second bidder, because now there's only two, is two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, it's a huge difference.
It, it is and, and you know, it, you know, we asked for a turnkey proposal that meets our practical needs to provide proper surveillance of the comings and goings of folks in the building and then with the hotspots that the principals have. So, anybody that walks into the building through any one of the entrances, we're going to be able to capture with, with some facial recognition, assuming that the cameras are all properly installed and, and functioning the way they're supposed to. And then, the other hotspots. So, we're going to bring them up, you know, if you have a per-camera price, that makes, that makes a difference. And, you know, when we subtract out the software, you know, we're off about seven dollars between the, the low bidder and, and the second low bidder. And they're, they're bidding with slightly different equipment, seven dollars per camera.
That's, that's correct, I, I see that here. And I, I do think the lowest bidder is in, right in the ballpark because the guy that dropped out, his camera price was pretty much the same, except he had fifty more cameras. So, my question is, when, when you start the job, you don't want him coming to you saying, you know, I think we, we need a lot more cameras here, we need more money.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna iron out the number and the placement and agree on that before we start. And we'll have capacity after things are up and running, but the principals are going to be on board to say, yeah, this, these are the areas I want to capture. And, and for outside, the, the police department will get their, you know, final input on how many cameras they want and what areas they, they want to capture. You know, so, you know, the, for example, the outdoor cameras, we're probably going with closer to the number thirty than the number sixteen.
Yeah, I would agree with that. He, I think the lowest bidder is, is probably the best guy for the job, but you just need to add more cameras is what I think.
And, and they both get a chance to sharpen their pencils, which they've been asked to do.
Since the next two guys are way beyond.
Because these were, these were proposals, it's not a hard bid where we have to take the low bidder. We, we can ask them to come back again. So, they get to see what, the, the cost for what the other person played in their cards and then they get to hustle one more time before we sign them up. Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Huban?
Do you have to choose one for both inside and outside? Because I know the, the high bidder, ISIS, is the one that the police use currently. But, their outdoor prices and that's what's going to be tied into the police department are very similar to the low bill, bidder. I think the big discrepancy is on the indoor cameras. So, can you use ISIS for the outdoor and then another company for the indoor?
Yes, we could. But, before we get there, we're going to let them, let them sharpen their pencils and have their, have their final say because the discrepancy between ISIS and BCM, the other bidder, like I said, is about seven dollars when you subtract out the software that's not necessary. And they're both going to sharpen their pencils and, and provide alternate manufacturers that will meet the same specifications. As I get some suggestions from the parents in the community that are in this field, they'd say that you can get equal, equal quality and never know the difference and still save a little bit on the cost of each camera.
Just, when you say seven dollars, seven, what's the seven dollars?
Well, when you subtract out the software.
Yeah.
From the indoor cameras.
Per camera?
Per camera. The cost difference is seven dollars per camera on the indoor cameras. So, it, it comes out to be, you don't see it there because this is information I've still been collecting since I gave this.
Because I'm seeing thousands here.
Yeah. The, the new cost would be twenty-eight fifty-four versus twenty-eight forty-eight. So, they're, they're, they're very close and they should be with the same performance specifications and the same requirements under the state contract. Now, it's just. Now, it's just a matter of make and model.
Any other questions? Ms. Bagley Jones?
I don't know, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but I think clearly you have this all under control. The placement of the cameras, would it make sense? I mean, I know you're doing this already. I guess because it's so much money and because the stakes are so high about this, who's the final signer offer of this is how many cameras we need? Is that Ms. Gormly? And I guess I'm looking at collaboration, you know, the police, the parents, Ms. Gormly, Matt, maybe Dennis, since he knows something about this business. You know, maybe there's a collaborative meeting at some point before the final, final decision is made. Because you're poring over the floor plans and the principals are telling you, but I'd feel more comfortable just knowing that there's, not one person should be responsible for this huge financial and big issue.
That, that collaboration has been ongoing.
Oh, I know it is. I'm saying, I'm just saying it's a final thing on this, like Dennis is raising some good points. I just want to know that that, there'll be a final meeting to go over all of that. I know you've been collaborating.
And to Ms. Bagley Jones's point, we were investigating cameras. Dr. Drother had been asking me for the last three years if there was any possibility to install cameras at Milton High even before the incidents that we went through last year. And we realized the cost of this. When we went through the school building project, we drove across the state looking at different schools. And to Ms. Bagley Jones's point, I think that I, we should work. Matt Gillis and I will go with John Drother, James Jet and anyone else who wants to travel with us. And we'll go to see some other schools and learn from other principals who have security systems. Most high schools do have security systems. So, we'll, before we make this final draft, we'll go and see some districts. Also, to, I want to thank Mr. Gillis, as you can see what the word busy doesn't characterize this summer. But to the two parents who responded with expertise, this is a very specialized field. And if anyone's viewing and has expertise in this field and would like to offer their services to just consult with Mr. Gillis, if they would email Mr. Gillis or me, we'll put them in contact. The two residents, Milton parents who stepped forward, you heard Mr. Gillis, they were invaluable. They have expertise in this field, the Milton Police have been working with us. And I know people are anxious that the cameras aren't installed before the beginning of school. But what was the line you used? Do it once and, once and, what was the phrase? Do it once, do it well. We're putting a lot of work into this. And so, the good news story is that through the school committee and the outside sources, we're able to do this and it will be done in the fall. But they are huge decisions and it's a lot of money. You can understand this work of the school building project and here we are pondering over our security system.
Well, Mr. Gillis, on behalf of the school committee, thank you for all the time and and thank you because I know there has been a lot of collaboration with the police and with Bill Ritchie and time going through the buildings and touring and all of that, meeting with the parents. It's, it's very important and I agree, it's worth taking, taking our time and doing it and doing it right. So, thank you very much. Anything else? Mrs. Kelly?
So, that definitely is a, a substantial investment that we think will go a long way towards creating a, you know, a great educational environment in both of those schools. In addition to cameras, we also have talked about over the summer, the school resource officers. As some may recall, we did at one time have two school resource officers, one at the high school and one at Pierce. We have actually, the superintendent wrote a letter on our behalf and forwarded it, I believe, to Chief Wells. Just putting the issue of school resource officers on the table as well, I think, is covering the, the security cameras. And asking, you know, for us to collaborate, just as we have been around the cameras. And, you know, the first unfortunate thing we always have to look at is how we're going to fund an additional position. And the police department did look at their budgets and unfortunately at this time don't have the resources to do that. However, I think the schools are still looking for resources to be able to fund that position. And so, I think we'll look to whatever might be available at the state level, you know, really scrutinize our budget and see if we believe, you know, that we can squeak out from somewhere some resources to put that position in because we think it is a very valuable one, again, towards creating that great educational environment for our kids. So, that work is ongoing.
Before you move on, Mrs. Kelly, either Ms. Gormly, could you speak to the responsibilities of the resource officer?
Absolutely.
Now, we're, we currently have one at the high school, so the one we're discussing is a potential additional position at the middle school.
Restoration.
Right, a restoration, thank you.
To, for the public to know and to reiterate that we do have a Milton Police Department-funded school resource officer at Milton High School. And I will tell you that two, in my recent history, two individuals have served in that position and I introduced them as Milton Public School staff. They are fully integrated into the high school, they walk the halls, they speak to the students, they're at the lunches before and after school. They sit on administrative team meetings. And my observation is there've been a line of communication between Milton High School students and the Milton Police Department. I can't speak for Chief Wells, but I've heard him characterize the school resource officer as a person who becomes familiar with our community's high school students, our community's children. And when you're going to school every day and you're working at the high school, you're among the students. And these individuals also serve the community beyond the school hours so that they gather information in the school. They bring information into the school from the police station if there's been an incident or something occurred over a weekend that might carry over into the school. Again, we don't have to wait through different vehicles to hear about the, any kind of carryover into the school. We have the school resource officer, which is a direct line between the Milton Police Department and Milton High School. The school resource officer is, I am a huge supporter of the school resource officer. And again, assuring the security and the safety of every one of our students and our staff, it's a very, very important position. When the position was at Pierce, it was just as vital with a different age group of students. And again, developing relationships, it's a different world. When I grew up, you, you know, you weren't, didn't have those relationships with the, with the police, with any police. And that's the kind of community, when you see the news and when you see the exposes on TV, developing relationships so that our young people feel safe and secure and can speak up. So, to have a resource officer at the Pierce Middle School would be an excellent addition to the Milton Public Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Gormly.
But we're thankful to the Milton Police Department that we do have that one position with the SGS funds at Milton High School.
Thank you.
And then just the one other thing that I wanted to touch on, there was discussion towards the end of last school year about the full-day kindergarten program and the AIDS. And I think at the end of the school year, we were talking about funding .6 of AIDS for each of the classrooms. But we were basically saying that we were going to watch how the grant was funded, et cetera, and basically look at our numbers and see what we could work out. And I would ask the, the administration to just report out where we're at with that, just so that people coming in will have a
Good, I should have included that in my report for the, I think we did report it out at our last meeting. The full-day kindergarten AIDS will be at 80%. So, that was a compromise, the finance subcommittee scrubbed every single grant number, examined the fees, looked at the school budget. And again, that was a decision that we all agreed upon. The full-day kindergarten parents that I have been corresponding with were very satisfied with that compromise and understood that we're going to work around the scheduling to maximize that 80% during the day, during prime teaching time, during reading and math. So, to a parent, I've gotten a very, very positive exception about the full-day kindergarten AIDS being at 80%. And the good news story is along with making these assignments, we're finalizing all of the full-day kindergarten tuitions. Again, the number, perhaps, we'll wait till the next meeting to give you the exact number. But the response to full-day kindergarten has one more time been phenomenal. And our half-day program is running at the Tucker School. And our co-taught full-day kindergarten program is at the Colly Cuthbert Cunningham.
And just one final thing, and that's as Superintendent Gormly mentioned, Matt and the business office have been very busy over the summer. One of the activities was closing out the books for FY-10. And so, I would look forward to either at next meeting or the meeting after, just to report out to the public how we closed out and then being able to post whatever reporting we have online so that people could avail themselves of that.
Thank you. Thank you for that finance subcommittee report. And you, anything else? Do we have any old business discussion? Mrs. Kelly, you just gave us a, a next meeting agenda item, the end of the year financials, is, is there anything else?
If that works, if not, you know, just over the next two meetings if we could get it in.
Yes, is that convenient for you, Mr. Gillis?
It's great.
Thanks. Any other agenda items for the next meeting? We do have a new video volunteer, his name is Shane Brandonberg and we welcome you, Shane, thanks for joining us. And at this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of contract negotiation and pending litigation, not to return to public session, but adjourned from the executive session.
Don't move.
Thank you, this will be done by roll call vote, Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Bagley Jones?
Yes.
I say yes, Mr. Pavlicek?
Yes.
Mr. Hubin?
Yes.
Mr. Cahane?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much, thank you, Cable.